All right, we are going to seven o'clock, we'll call meeting. And we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I don't forget.
Okay, Mayor Manning.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Glanzer.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Branman and Monahan are absent with notice.
All right, for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So I can't leave?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For a motion approved minutes from February four, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we got minutes from special meeting on two ninety, two thousand and twelve.
Uh, motion to approve.
I'll sign it down.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I vote in favor too.
There you go.
You can.
All right, next again, Bill Smith.
Approve Bill's as written.
Wait a second.
I'll say.
Discussion. None, we'll vote. Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right, now we got a minute for public comments. Anybody from the public want to give input on any ground gen items? Okay. Remove the applications hearings, resolutions and ordinances. First one we got on there is resolution twenty twenty dash one, appointment of applicant agent for the hazard mitigation grant program. Application one is two portable emergency generators, application two is the emergency shelter slash concession stand slash R R building.
Restroom.
Restroom building, yep. And sports complex. Discussion of these, yep.
Yeah, so just a little background on this, so FEMA right now has, you can apply for hazard mitigation grant. With all the, with the tornadoes and the flooding that had happened last year, they're releasing funds for Minnahaak County and several other counties. But basically the grant out there is paying now eighty-five percent, fifteen percent, which is really good. You don't come across those grants very often, so any approved application, they pay eighty-five percent of project, we'd only actually pay fifteen percent. So last council meeting, we discussed applying for a couple of generators to keep our lift stations up and going. Our main one has a battery backup, but then of course we have the north lift station and the new one down Long Mickelson. So this is a good cost effective way to get those generators. So we're moving forward with that application as council director last time. We thought of a second application that we can submit as well. As you know, the sports complex out there, we've been talking for a while about how do we get a concession stand slash restroom out there? And what would be the most cost effective way to do it? This year, a budget time, the council budget a hundred thousand dollars for that. It's gonna cost obviously more than that. But a couple of weeks ago, Art and Travis, the mayor myself, met with some of those members from the sports complex committee. And they asked about what different grants are out there? And if we would put up the building to meet FEMA's requirements to make it also a storm shelter? So basically, you know, beef it up a little bit, so it would pass those guidelines. We can apply for this grant for that as well, which would be great, you know? Kinda ran some of the numbers. We come up with a preliminary design mic on the sports complex, kinda been working on that. And the size of building that they're kinda estimating, about a twenty-six foot by fifty-one foot building. I took, Saco was done a cost analysis a year ago or so about it. And they figured about two hundred sixty a square foot for the building. And so I just took that amount and figured if we use that with those dimensions, it's maybe about three hundred and forty-five thousand. Now, I don't know if that is beefing it up. I'm sure it might be more expensive to beat it up, to beef it up to, you know, be a storm shelter. But even if it's, even, we could put basically a five hundred thousand dollar building out there and still be in within that budget guideline of a hundred thousand. So if council is agreeable, we will submit that application as well. We're kind of under a tight deadline, this just kinda came all together at once and the applications are due by March fifteenth. So, you know, unlike the council give the go ahead, if you wanna at least apply for it, no guarantee of course that we'll get it. But you know, if we submit that application, this is a, a good way to get a big portion of it paid for.
Can you separate or?
Yes, and that's another thing, we wanted two different applications, so if one gets denied, you know, the other one isn't denied as well. You know, we, cause we had the possibility again, at least one of them approved, you know, so.
Motion to approve, so resolution twenty twenty dash one, article one, for portable generators, the tile you want read.
Well, basically, so then the resolution, you know, if you're agreeable to submit the applications, what this resolution does, it's basically designates me as a city administrator to sign the paperwork for the application. So I think you just need to make a motion to approve the resolution, so I can move forward with the paperwork for the application. So we'll get them submitted and see what happens.
So moved.
Sorry. All right, so we have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash one, and as presented. The other questions or discussion? Ken, we'll vote. Keel?
Yes.
Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
All right, thanks for all your work on that, Teresa and Mitch.
We'll get it.
All right, we're gonna move on to reports. First up, we got.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Recapping January, we had twenty-nine total calls, twelve of those in Hartford. So a little bit of an uptick in our call volume for the month. Otherwise, pretty slow month, forced otherwise in the department. January training for both fire and EMF side, the complete department recertified on CPR. Also as part of that training, we trained on our LifePAC fifteen and Lucas CPR machine. In addition to training on pit crew CPR, which we're working in cardiac arrest, is really assigning tasks and works. Responders for that, so we can have a synchronized effort there.
Pit crew CPR?
Pit crew CPR, yep. And it's really, let's say Sioux Falls is doing it with their police department, fire department, ambulance. It's something that's really pushing out, let's say more than just the area that, it could be the sheriff's department responding to a call with us. They have their certain steps, but we arrive, we have the certain steps as a ambulance or a paramedic would arrive, they roll into certain items and activities, so.
So certain, what's your minimum number of people for pit crew, or is it?
Well, you know, you start out with one and as your staffing increases, you fill additional roles, so. Up to five people working a patient, so. That's all I have for you tonight, short and sweet. Any questions on your end?
Just get the verbal version again?
Yes, you did just get the verbal version.
Facts are friendly. If I don't write them down, they just disappear. All right, I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks to you. Move on to Chamber of Economic Development Director report, Jesse?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, your package is from Hartford, January. A few highlights here is we had a great month of membership joins, or membership new members in January. We had a quarter of Chamber of Commerce. On the foundation side of things, our work continues strong on the envisioned Hartford twenty twenty-four campaign. Hartford's five-year, two million dollar capital campaign that results in more jobs in town, industrial development, cap quality like improvements, as well as a business development side of things. We spent the last, gosh, three weeks now really hitting the pavement hard in the sense that we're really paying a strong foundation on what this is gonna take place, how it's gonna take place over the next, gosh, five to six months. And so you'll be seeing a formal request from Al Duvey and the foundation likely in March at some point. Al and I are going to be working diligently harder, very hard over the next few weeks to ensure that things are, are still moving forward in that campaign. And one of our first, first goals is talking to the city council formally. And so, so far we've had great feedback from people in the community about this plan. And the plan itself, the bullet points, policies, concepts, really developed by the community. And so what we've done recently, we've had leadership briefings held, we've held three or four briefings, many of you have been part of these briefings. And our next step is a refinement process, we're being invited people from the community, I'm gonna talk about what they think the plan should look like. What policies we should be including, what plans should be included, what goals should be achieved in that plan. And that's where it's important to engage people because we want them to feel that they have ownership over this process and plan. And we're also working on the economic impact analysis, so what does it mean to add a hundred jobs or two hundred jobs over five years? And so we've taken our target industries and we've broken them down by per sector to see what the impact looks like. We're gonna make some adjustments because of Sioux Falls being so close, it can kinda skew the data. And so we're really trying to get a good picture of what this may or may not look like over five years. In larger markets, this organization is able to pinpoint very closely GDP estimates. But since Hartford's a little bit different than most of their clients being suburb of Sioux Falls, we're just trying to work through that data to get a very clear picture for you. But it's gonna be good. Any questions for me?
No, that's, that's cool. It feels good, all of that, you've got order directors.
Yep.
In J D F.
Yep, we have two new board members at our last meeting on February seventh. Travis Keel, Travis Electric, as one of the board, as a full board member, as so has Keith Neteese.
Then officers comes up soon?
It's supposed to be happening the fourteenth, but we had some quorum issues due to, to people being out of town. So we will be having office elections held on the twenty-first, so this Friday. We're also making some significant changes to our bylaws. And right now our attorneys are doing those changes and hope to have it approved in the next three to four weeks. Some of those things, some of those changes include just how we held our elections, how membership might mean, things like that. Not that it's bad, but the, the bylaws were first created in the seventies and there's been a whole lot of overhaul since then, so. Just adding first nice tweaks and cleaning up a little bit.
And as we discuss, we'll have you stay for the first part of executive a little bit, and.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on, thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
All right, Mitch, engineer report, and we got a couple action orders.
Yep, I didn't really have anything to go over in the report itself, I'm assuming we had questions. Just like to move on to the action orders that we have. First one being the Ninth Street bid award, open bids on February fifth. Should have a recommendation of award in your packet and you can see, we had six bidders there and they had really good bids that day, so we're pretty happy with the turnout. Zach Arias was the low bidder, five hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and three dollars, so he's well under our estimate. So you can kinda see the range of where everybody was at there. Zach's a local contractor, pretty recordable, so we'd recommend that your award, job award to them. Any questions, I guess, on the bid itself?
What was our timeframe on that, Mitch, do you remember?
We set up a completion date, I wanna say it was September first, about there for completion. But once they start, we told them they had seventy days to finish the job, so we don't have somebody starting and then not, and taking off to another job and then not, and coming back and forth. So we did have some language in there that added that to it too.
Are there any sewer, did we do all the sewer work?
There's some, there's some sewer to extend. It's ba, it's basically kinda middle of that project and we're extending it the rest of the way to the west, towards Beereville.
Yep. Sure ways down that, you already pushed to the ways down that street, right?
Yeah, we're, we're replacing the water main all the way through, because we are cutting the road down, especially on the west side, a good two feet.
Okay.
So we're feeling we're gonna lose our cover on our water mains, we are replacing that line. That was kinda, we were really.
Is that the, what the?
Yeah, it'll go in deeper. We were really anticipating that when we first went into the project, the way things laid out kinda necessitated it, so.
Existing road that's there on the west doesn't look like it's gonna stay, that. Tie into it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You said that it was gonna cut about two foot?
Yeah.
That's always in contract documents to have a sweep Vandemark on a weekly or daily basis?
It's, it's in there, it's a, I believe it's a daily basis is what's in there, yeah.
And that water main will be outsized to, to an eight inch, so, seven to six.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was the, what was the estimate done?
Our estimate was six hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Six sixty-one?
And that, you know, even the higher bidders were kinda in that range, but we, we kinda edged it up, cause we expected higher bids than, than this. We had bid some jobs earlier that were, they got, they probably did as good a pricing as we saw here. This was probably one of the better bids we saw this year.
Sure.
Well, the low two were close, weren't they?
What's that?
The low two were close.
Yeah. And if, and if I remember right, when we were trying to pursue a change order, with, they were above six hundred thousand in fact, change order, so we paid to go back and redo it.
Well, that's right, yeah.
So you're cutting that road down, so then how far are we, are we paving all the way to thirty-eight, where'd that?
Yeah, it turns to concrete there, at, at, once it comes off the highway, so we'll be high into that slant.
Okay.
All right, if we have any motions?
Motion to approve low bid for Xycaris construction for the Ninth Street improvement from Highway thirty-eight to Vandemark Avenue.
Second.
Discussion.
Funding of this, Teresa?
So the funding for this is when we got our funding, our D E N R funding with Vandemark, we at one time thought about putting it as one project, so we added five hundred thousand dollars to that funding source. So we've got a loan already from D E N R for partial bit, and the rest will be of reserves.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Glanzer?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Okay, the next action that we have is a proposal from our office for a small project, the rude lane, upper lane, intersection repairs. I believe that was brought up during budget time to do a project over there, so this is proposal for design services, put together construction documents and perform construction administration, once we did the project, and to watch over the project. I don't know if everybody familiar with the, the project, there's an exhibit in the back that shows the location, but it's up in the Western Meadows subdivision. If you go and look at that intersection, there's some storm sewer that's heaved up through the intersection and you can just tell freestones, causes and things to move around there and it's a pretty rough ride through there. So basically this will be to remove the asphalt. We're gonna look at those storm sewers and I think we might have to pull them out and get a more of a bedding underneath them, a frost-free bedding, so they don't heave like they are now. And then put everything back.
So Craig, what, you know, that particular confined area, I mean, outside of the heaving that you're talking about, I mean, any idea kinda how and why it happened, I mean, just that condensed area? We've got other culverts under shallow that are, have done the same thing. They're smaller ones where we usually just take care of them, cut them out and we, we don't do anything with the culverts. And like, yeah, we just do something with the asphalt, we dig it out a little bit, just do it. But there is, it happened in other spots too. The other thing up there is the, for some reason the asphalt's pulled, so that's why they're going back. One hundred and eighty feet or something like that, the one way. Two lifts are basically sliding, so it's, the road's starting to fall apart. And then also there, there was a future road going to the north there, that intersection, we're gonna get rid of that, clean up the valves and stuff down there and redo that hydrant, so it's coming off on the main line. And then put, make that street just straight through, cause there won't be anything to the north, so.
There won't be anymore?
No, that's been, plans have changed there.
We budgeted?
Hundred and eighty?
Hundred and eighty thousand for this?
The city's gonna do the actual work, or not, are you gonna let that portion of it?
Yeah, we'll let it go. We'll have to let out, we won't, we don't have equipment enough to get those, to reset those boxes and stuff, though.
We're gonna stay with the budget, you think?
Oh, so Mitch gave you the numbers.
Yeah. So Mitch is following.
We should be.
Back to the best. Yeah.
Waiting for the best.
All right, do we have any motion?
I was just curious, the thirty-four thousand on a hundred and eighty, that's a, that's a much, but maybe that's just.
You know, when you look at higher percentages of the overall job, this is a small, the smaller jobs like this, we end up having to put in a higher percentage. Just because you still have, for such a small job, you still have a lot, significant on a survey, and you have just more time spent on those types of things, I guess.
Cause if you look at those percentage rises.
Yeah.
It didn't look very favorable.
Yeah, I mean, anything under a couple hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we tend to have to increase our percentages just to make it work for us.
How long has the city had possession of that street, when did that developer turn out, or what was?
Seven years?
It's, it's seventy years, I guess.
Yeah, probably seven years.
I know they did the bottom lift in one year and then they came back into the top lift the next year and they did it.
Nothing, yeah, that's, that's not counting. Even with the delay of several years, you don't generally see those lifts slide.
Not quite like you're seeing out there. So it makes me wonder if it was just a little dirty or something and they put that second lift down, if they didn't quite get it all cleaned up, and everything.
Well moved. We gotta make a motion. I'd make a motion to approve proposal for services for the rude and old pole intersection repair.
Second. All right, discussion. We'll vote. Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Glanzer? All right. And the last one's that proposal for concept layout on the sports complex, storm shelter concession, restroom building, we talked about a little bit earlier.
So we had a meeting with the sports complex committee before the last meeting, Art and, Travis, you were there. And we talked about just trying to get, you know, architect on board at that meeting. So we reached out to a couple different architects, we reached out to one in Sioux Falls that was too busy and was just couldn't fit in their schedule because of the tight timeframe. We ended up teaming with N S H, who does Sioux Falls, and they do a lot of restroom type facilities, so they're pretty familiar with safe rooms and FEMA requirements and whatnot that go along with it, so we think they'll be really good there. But this agreement's just to conceptualize the structure, so we can get enough information for the application. And you're not going into any sort of full design of the structure. But this will give us a good spot to get some input onto what the footprint should be and the floor layout should be a little bit from an architect standpoint. Again, we've been involved with a lot of these too, so our landscape architect, David Locke, will probably be involved with it just to help guide that discussion through. But that's generally what the scope of work is, is just to get that conceptual, probably a footprint and a cost estimate to go with, with the application that Teresa's working on.
Can we be able to get this done, so we can get all in?
Yep, we'll meet that deadline. I did talk to C Con a little bit, it sounds like, um, once you submit, it's about a month process that the state will review and collect applications, from my understanding. And then they send it out to FEMA, FEMA does have quite a long time to review and they've got like, I thought she said a year, but she thought it would take them six months to, they, they didn't think we'd find out till August whether you got the grant. Just so you know.
Okay, so I guess what I'm wondering on this is, um, what we have so far, it sounded like, um, from the sports complex committee, they were able to get some plans drawn up through, through somebody over at Van, that, and this is what you sent out, something out, we start packing, is that right, Teresa?
Yeah, mine from the sports complex.
I think it was probably Dave, I would assume, I've been there, I have neural, I have them. Does that do what we needed to do for the time being, and have you had a chance, does anybody have a chance to look at that, I guess?
I just got the three D, last week he had the, the layout, and that's where I got those dimensions off of, for the cost figures. And then today he sent over a, a three D version to kinda help you look at, and that's what I put in your box to, so you can look at it. We can use that for the grant application, we're still gonna need cost estimates with it, so that's gonna need to be figured. And of course, when you figure those cost estimates, that's when you're gonna have to make sure it meets those guidelines for the storm shelter and what, so to make sure all that's figured into it, so we will still need to do that, so there will be some, some work needing to be done by the engineer with that, for sure. And then like I said, you know, you submit the, the application and, I didn't know it took that long for FEMA to review it. I knew it took about a month for state to do it and that goes over to FEMA, but they'll review, but, and then once we find out if we actually get the grant, that's when we can move forward with an actual architect and, you know, to design it and who that may be, that's, you know, of course up to the council, but, but we do need something for the application, I think we can go out for the land that they've got, but we're still gonna need cost estimates to make sure they meet the FEMA requirements.
So are you recommending?
So, I, I think you, we are gonna need like our engineers to kinda, I think what this proposal's doing is for them to oversee that process, is it? Basically?
Yeah, and it's just to get through the concept part of it.
Application, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not actually saying that we're gonna do this architect or that architect or that engineer well, but it's to get, go, having them oversee the concept piece, so we can submit this grant, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve engineer proposal for concept lab and sports complex storm shelter concession stand restroom building.
Second.
All right, discussion. Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Glanzer? Great, thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Other things uncovered, any questions for Mitch? Can we get to get Ninth Street?
I thought it was something I wanted to ask him, but I forgot.
Craig?
Really don't have any updates, still don't have the maintainer back together yet. They haven't showed up the last three days or a couple days, so, we're still waiting for them to come back. Still think it's an ejector, but we'll find out. Always have nothing else in the report, I guess?
I, I did get Craig to call this afternoon, not that I'm advocating this, but I just asked him about the bike trails and cost and time to keep the bike trails clear. Craig informed me that when we put the bike trail heading out to Hartford Heights, our agreement is with the state. Uh, Craig informed me that when we put the bike trail heading out to Hartford Heights, our agreement is with the state that we have to keep that as clear as we possibly can, and also going north from the cemetery, we have to keep that clean because of agreement with the county, because of their purchase. And the only reason we're asked, cause I know you guys are spending, did you have any time to take a look and see what?
So the last time, um, under a normal snow event, you know, maybe a little drifting here and there, um, one of our part-time snow removal guys been out there and had to carry in those hours, and it took, um, the one time it took three point six eight hours and I was doing all the trail system and sidewalks were all that part of it. And then I believe he is even working on that, so it, uh, three point six eight hours, so his, right, his check was like sixty dollars. So, um, it typically takes about three hours to clean just bike trails, all of them. And this last time with the winds, we had to go back up there at blower and blow them off a few times, so.
And that's what, why we were thinking? We just, we happened to drive by you the other day and you could see that it was blowing.
Yeah, Terry was up there with the blower a couple different times and it was about two hours, he said that he was okay.
We have a, we got grants for all the trails and have agreements to keep them off, except for the one, um, a long railroad that goes through, you know, Turtle Creek Park, that little portion we funded straight with our money and said, we'll clean it or not, but all the rest of them, we have agreements, cause we got grants on them to keep them clear.
And Nicholson Road is considered a sidewalk.
Right. And that's a mess. I see you told me that you had to move some of that snow back, that's a mess right now. I mean, it's clear, I'm not saying that bad, but it's, there's a lot of snow piled up.
Yeah, there's no room to push the snow up there, kinda like on your side there too, so
Right.
there, at least we can drop the wing over, throw it up on the sidewalk and then get it out of there afterwards.
Yeah, I think you wait till after I blow my sidewalk clear and then you come on our side.
I've seen the same thing.
I think it's purposeful, I'm just saying.
We even did triple it, I mean, their direct cost was sixty dollars.
Yep.
So you put the burden on there and tax and everything and then to make some wear and tear on the equipment, it's around two hundred bucks if you, if you wanna get, you know, for round numbers, because of budgeting purposes, so to speak.
Just a question, we just, you know, with all the wind we've had and we knew that, we figured that you'd been spending some time on it, just curious.
And if it gets, gets to the point where we can't get it open, then we're allowed it up.
Let it go for you.
But you'd be surprised that, if we, when we do get out there and open it up, the foot trail, track, that's already on there, it's just crazy.
Yeah.
We try to keep it open, we've never had it where we couldn't get it open.
Right.
I think there was some comments that it's in better shape than Part E was, but.
Wow.
Wow.
He went there. All right. If you have anything else, you've got your mower out there.
Yep, and we are getting close with Turtle Creek, we're pretty close, uh, maybe by August.
So that'll be official?
Official naming.
Hopefully by August, it'll be actually Turtle Creek, so. And then, yeah, I got the mower out here, um, as an gen item. So I got prices from the last, both on a brand new one, um, with no hours on it, and then he mentioned he had this demo that's got, he figured about forty-eight hours on it, that's what JP thought he seen on it. He's gonna give us a full warranty with it, um, basically it's got a few hours on it, yeah, um, he's knocking about thirty-seven hundred dollars off on it.
Hey, which one, where we traded the one in we bought a couple of years ago?
Uh, it's, I think four years old right now.
Four years? See, we buy one every year, that's why I had to ask.
Yeah, well, we, with three different mowers, we're, we're kinda rotating them in, so every year we try and update one of them, so.
Motion to approve, uh, the vote to purchase a new mower with trade-in with Gillespie Outdoor Power and Equipment.
My memory serves me correct, you have about twenty-five thousand and they budgeted for a mower to check.
Yep. Yeah, we budgeted, we didn't know exactly what we're gonna get for trade-in on ours, or if we, we even kinda thought about keeping it and just buying a new one out, but we're not gonna be ready up there for a couple of years, and by that time, this other mower will be probably ready to maybe move up there or something.
You're not gonna be ready up there if you need to have one.
Yeah, the other fields are gonna be, will be more of a little bit this year, but they won't be ready for.
All right, any other discussion? On both? Nelson?
Yes.
Lancer? Keel?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
That's all we got, if somebody else has anything else.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
We'll move down to Karen's report. Brian Thompson?
Nothing to add, someone has questions.
I probably should ask this in, uh, in Bill's report, and the first one is, is that twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-two thousand and twenty-one cents for Sultan Santa Street, is that the annual, is that the annual, or where are you at, I mean, how much of a chunk is that for the year?
We still have a little left in there, which we'll probably end up either getting next fall and having some fresh stuff up in there. I think we, we had to mope it up a little bit this year, just because we were taking out more streets, so.
Yeah. So you're saying that at this point, of course, March is the snowiest month of the year, um, we should be okay as far as?
I think we'll make it through the spring, yeah.
Okay, cool.
At this point.
That started here, that's really, that started towards Craig, and I should have, but I just saw that, I, I didn't see anything, so.
All right.
Well, I have no other questions. Correct, it's towards Craig.
Uh, I do have one question. Help me remember how the sports complex funds got to be two hundred and twenty-six. And now, as I look again, I see a couple of big hundred thousand dollar deposits, one in twenty-seventeen, and we have budgeted a hundred again for twenty-twenty, correct?
We budgeted a hundred, yes, for this year.
Yeah.
I would assume, I'd have to look back at my detail, but I would assume we probably budgeted, do you have that, Teresa?
Twenty-seventeen, it looks like.
I know one year we had budgeted for lights, and then we never did the project, and so that stayed in there.
Yeah, I have a sheet that shows all the details, I summarize it at the end of the year.
That's what I'm looking at, yeah.
Yeah, so the two twenty-six includes?
Includes the funds appropriated but not requested.
Correct.
Yep.
That's the one that shocked me, I've been looking at that all, twenty-nineteen, you go, and there's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I read from my own survey.
Did you?
Relax, it's all good.
Okay. I'm assuming that's what that probably is, I don't know where else they get that much money.
Well, we'll move to Teresa's report, thank you Karen.
Sure. Um, as for mine, I don't have much to add either, that's on, just reminder, District Nine meeting, so do you wanna go, the deadline's March fifth, just let our office know, either Mayor Karen know. Trying to coordinate with Brian, the lock boxes still, I'm waiting to hear from him, I've emailed him a couple of times to see, you know, soon as the fire department's ready to go on there, and we will be sending out those letters to the businesses, letting them know they need to upgrade it, so still waiting to get the okay from him. And then, um, the long-range transportation plan that, uh, we're working on with the MPO area, just to let you know, we do have some open houses coming in and up, I should say, we just finalized today, there's gonna be one held here in Hartford, it's gonna be on March twenty-fifth from five to six-thirty, and we'll send this out to you again, but, um, basically, it's an open house to, there'll be some, um, easel set up there, kinda shows the different projects that are planned for this, uh, report. And it's to get really public input, to have them look it over, um, get their input of what the public thinks the future needs uh, for the MPO, for the transportation plan, and kinda incorporate that into this. So that's gonna be March twenty-fifth, and then, but we are also gonna try work, to work, um, setting up, uh, basically a stakeholders meeting for um, city staff, you know, public work myself, the council, planning zoning, um, they want to get the city's input on where we think the needs are, where we think our transportation needs are for the next forty years, you know, so we're gonna, um, we're gonna sit down with Jeremy and try to figure out a date and time for that in the next couple of weeks, and so we'll let you know once we get that set too, and so hopefully, we can get some of you guys there and we can get that input and go over it, so just let you know that's coming up, otherwise, I don't have anything else, unless you have any other questions.
Is anybody thinking of going to the District Board meeting?
It seems like pretty informative, huh?
It's a nice meeting because, um, a lot of the cities go there, but you, I like the part that they can give you a legislative update and let you know what laws are changing, what things will affect cities, you know, in this year coming up, so it's kinda informative.
We had a busy week that week, though, that's the equalization situation for.
Yeah, yeah.
City council meeting, then the equalization, and that'd be three nights in a row.
Made me dead mad.
You don't need to be home.
Well, on that note, I mean, uh, there's a, Bill moving through the, to peer, um, Herman Otten, T T, was a general contractor proposing to allow homeowners to wear their homes, should they live in set homes. Uh, that was a law that doesn't affect a few years ago, that one way, and it's coming back again. So think of the implications of that and consider that if you want homeowners in our community wearing their own homes that they potentially will live in until the first available attractive offer comes in and they sell that home.
That's what I'll be keeping an eye on.
Yeah, a little bit, so. Whether you're an electrician or not, or your neighbor, something good to know.
Electrician scares the hell out of me.
All right, anything else for Teresa? Thank you. All right, next one, we'll go business. We've got a bunch of different clubs, um, property areas, closing, right?
Yeah, so I, uh, love the fact that Travis pointed out, we had two hundred and twenty-six thousand, I'm gonna ask Spencer about that now. So, uh, on the night, we had a complex committee meeting as well as a Hartford, uh, sports, uh, sorry, Hartford softball committee, and then we all got together and we sat down with Great Plains sponsorship, and they kinda went through their overall plan and what they felt it would take, uh, to get, you know, us to where we need financially be, uh, with, with funds to complete our complex out there, they feel that they can, uh, definitely reach out to some big players within our community, uh, who would have interest in potentially sponsoring stuff out in our complex and, and helping us finish things off versus, uh, trying to do it a hundred thousand dollars at a time. Uh, so, what I'm asking for is the ability to spend up to forty thousand dollars of the appropriated two hundred and twenty-six thousand to secure, uh, Great Plains sponsorship as a, uh, company that we can use to help raise funds to complete our, uh, complex. There is no contract with them, uh, long-term, we can get out of, uh, anything with them at any time, so, uh, they, they went through their list of, of contacts and in their overall, uh, attack strategy, and we voted on it as a committee and, and approved unanimously that we would like to use our funds to do that. So what's the additional cost on top of the forty, or is that it? So the forty is the retainer, and we did pay it up quarterly, and it's up to forty, um, I don't think it would be forty, we need to negotiate with them yet. Um, but I, worst case scenario, uh, would be forty. Uh, but that is retainer for them to reach out, our, they would also be the ones that would put together the contracts or any sponsors that we would secure, they would be the ones that would be responsible for collecting the money, uh, but the other thing, so the way that their, uh, fee structure works is a higher retainer and a lower commission, or a lower retainer and a higher commission. So at the, we looked at it from a complex committee, we want to be higher, uh, higher retainer and the lower commission off of whatever that they would bring to us. So I believe at this, uh, level that, that we pick, the max would be like that forty thousand retainer, uh, ceiling, but they would, uh, I believe get like up to fifteen percent of whatever they brought in from us.
Typically, they did, you pay out quarterly, is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you, how, how, are you, did they talk about, uh, monthly, weekly, quarterly reports on, on, on the scope of work, do you guys have an idea? You know, okay, we're getting our ten thousand dollars worth for this quarter.
Yeah, uh, I, so I was voluntold to be directly involved with it, uh, so my, uh, my expectation is just from being in this world and understanding what we'd be paying for, and essentially this guy would be out selling and, and, you know, uh, I would expect at least a monthly report to understand what I'm getting for my money, because if all he's doing is picking up the phone and making a couple of calls and not getting anywhere, that's what we were all doing before that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't cost us anything.
Come on, it's the same building that used to live in Hartford.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Ryan, uh, Query, or, yeah, I think that was his name. He's, he lives in Omaha now, and, uh, owns this organization that all they do is they raise funds, so they've been very successful raising funds, uh, over in Brandon for the Brandon Ice Complex that they're, they're building there. They've also done quite a bit of work in securing funds for different sanitary projects.
Motion to approve, uh, the forty thousand dollar retainer for Dakota Plains, what?
Uh, GPS, Great Plains sponsorship.
GPS. And if I could, um, add something to that, that would, help me with verbiage here, uh, it sure would be nice that we could see, you know, what kind of progress is being made, so, once you get that from Ryan, if somehow a way or form, you can share that with us.
Absolutely, I, yeah, I reckon.
Cause otherwise, if someone's gonna ask us, we'll have no clue.
Absolutely.
So everyone, however you want, Karen, uh, put that in there, in that motion, that's the only thing I can think of, unless someone else wants it, Melch?
Let's first see what we got for a second. Basically, you've got a motion to approve along with, um, updates.
Yeah.
Basically, updates, I don't know whether these have a motion approved with updates. All right, do a second. Okay, you're numbered.
I'd like to have a little, oh, okay.
That motion fails from my perspective.
I think we need to see a contract of some sort, that makes me a little nervous, that we would go forty thousand and file a contract. Well, um, in fairness, uh, on Sunday, when Great Plains was there, I mean, I I understand, we have special council meetings. So he had all that stuff there, ready to go, and, and part of the reason while, why I'm up here asking for it, I think we need to strike why the iron is hot, and I'm, I'm, I hate time, I'm, I'm the biggest impatient person that you're ever going to meet, and to, to, I mean, we had it already there, no one from the council was able to, to attend, so but I hate to keep putting things off and off and off, especially right now with all of the momentum we have, going around softball with all of the momentum we have, uh, with tournaments and organizations coming out and wanting to play and, and bring their softball clubs to Hartford. Uh, for us not to have the facilities for, you know, for these organizations is kinda ridiculous, we're, we're getting a lot of, you know, momentum going with the, with the, you know, potential bathroom and all that stuff, so I think, you know, right now, funding is what's holding us back, right? And I'm not a professional fundraiser, nobody on the Sports Rec Complex is a professional fundraiser or on the softball committee. Um, you know, this one, this year, we're, we're not, uh, you know, ac- really able to ask for anything else because of the limited budget that we have. We feel that this is the best investment of our money to turn this forty thousand dollars into something else that could potentially, you know, bring us hundreds of thousands, if not, you know, millions of dollars to complete this fund without having to get any more money from the city, and, uh, you know, understanding what, what the contract is, and we can get all of that stuff sent out, but, but again, what I'm looking for is instead of waiting and waiting and waiting and have this thing But, but again, what I'm looking for is, instead of waiting and waiting and waiting and have this thing push out to really not get approved until April, which means you won't really get started until May, which means the season's already going, we've already lost a lot of momentum and a lot of interest at the beginning of the season. I think we need something in motion now, so that as we're in the heart of softball season, people can see our complex being used and realize what they're putting their money into.
I appreciate your passion, BJ. I've had a visit with Ryan last summer already, thinking forward to twenty twenty and, and there potentially, we've already somewhat missed some of the, our apex, so to speak. I have several concerns, if there's all of this momentum, how many people attended your, your meeting on Sunday night?
We had about fifteen people there, fifteen, big twenty.
How many people attended the meeting previous to that?
Probably about fifteen. The last two meetings, because of all the stuff that we have going on, have been the most attended meetings. Uh, we did our elections, uh, last, uh, meeting as well, and, I mean, the only reason why I agreed to, to stay on was because of the progress that, that I was seeing going. If there is no progress going, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and waste my time, nor am I gonna waste any of your guys' time with this. I think that enough time has gone by with this piece of land that we have north of town, that it's, the time is now. My daughter is only gonna play for four more years, after that, I don't care. We know that it's not gonna be played on this year, and it probably won't be played on next year. But if we don't get after it then, it's just gonna be a chunk of ground out there that doesn't ever get played on. So, again, the momentum is now, um, I think we gotta.
Respectfully, with that being said, in my opinion, and to try to maybe speak for other council members, or not council members, but my constituents, that sounds very self-serving.
In what way, Travis?
Quite understandable.
My daughter, these years, my, me, 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 me.
Just let me show this, alright.
I do have one question, I know last meeting we had asked to see if there was other, I guess, that vendors out there to per se, do we ever go back and look, did we ever have an opportunity to see if there was other vendors out there?
Uh, no.
Okay. I guess that's maybe one concern, so I'd like to kinda compare before sticking forty thousand dollars into one. I understand that's one that's maybe common in this area, but just to kinda compare, to see what we're getting from that contract.
Not a knock on Dan taking the minutes, but the minutes only reflect there were seven people there. So, uh, that was for the February one, the, the one in, uh, January. Uh, it was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven people there as well.
Yeah, we have a softball meeting going on at the same time, so there is.
So, you know, again, if I'm a, if I'm a taxpayer, I'm a constituent, I'm looking at this thing. I, it, it looks pretty narrow.
Agreed, and that's why I'm trying to alleviate as much tax dollars as possible and get somebody else to raise the funds, so that somebody else is paying for it. And, and to the, the point of the, the me, 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 and, and with all, all due respect, uh, I'm in a very sound, uh, mind your body and belief that if, if I don't do it or if I don't care about it, then nobody else will. I'm not going to put this on you guys, because if I did, it wouldn't get done. It hasn't been done, right? So, if I'm not stepping forward and I'm not putting myself out there, it's just gonna sit here and continue to be a chunk of land that is getting half-utilized for what its original purposes. So, whether it's me, whether it's Dan, whether it's the five hundred other people I can get in here and, and say the exact same thing, it's not as much of a me issue as it is a community issue.
Two spinoff of Ardens coming in about the contract, would it behoove us to possibly, um, okay, since the motion failed, um, request this as an, 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 an agenda item next month, uh, with contract provided, so that we could then at that time have the nuts and bolts of the whole thing? Is that a right deal?
I see some logistical issues with this. Both Ard and I have resigned from being, you know, actively involved in that board. Where's the city's, uh, s, share, what's this, or oversight perhaps maybe is a better word? You know, you had asked for the updates, but, um, I don't know if that's, that's in the rears. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
This is what happened or isn't happening, or we hope to have happened, uh, without a lot of engagement. So, I'm thinking of the park and rec board that's coming, um, I, I don't, I'm just trying to logistically figure out how all the pieces fit together, and this thing doesn't spin off by itself, um, without.
I think, I think a lot of what you're hearing, BJ, though, is, and I'll just kinda tell you where I'm at on it, right now is, fifteen days ago, maybe more than that, maybe it was sixteen days ago, I didn't know anything about it, right? Came, hit the agenda, we talked about it at a council meeting, um, he came to town within a week after that, and here we are at a council meeting. I, I know that whenever something is, is pertinent as this and as expensive as this, and has this, could have this much impact, it, rushing into it's usually not the best idea. Usually, it doesn't feel the best on our end of the table, because that's usually where we'll make the mistake. The other part of it that I have concerns with is that, is the timing of it. I think it, I think it's fantastic if you have to do it. I think it's probably, I know when with the Hartford Area Foundation, when they hired on their consultant to start with fundraising campaign for the twenty twenty-four piece, it was like, yep, that's what we need to do, that's the piece that's been missing this whole time, we need outside help to be able to do this. And I think that that is, I honestly, in my heart, I think that's exactly what, what we need to do with the sports complex too. However, I don't think we should start it right on the heels of the same thing happening. I know your view on that, and I, I respect that, but I also, I, it gives me a little bit of hesitancy to say, we haven't looked at a contract, we haven't looked at competing vendors, we haven't looked at anything that hurt about sixty days ago. I wanna do it, and if it's a good idea today, it'll still be a good idea in whatever that next time frame is, in six months, to have a, a great campaign for twenty twenty-one. That's my opinion on it. Because I, I think it's important, and I agree with you, knocking things out a hundred thousand dollars at a time is gonna be hard. I think we gotta do things this way.
Agreed.
I, that just kinda give me where I come from on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, I completely, you know, I understand some concerns and, uh, you know, I can definitely show you, uh, get some contracts, it, it, you have to bring in, um, if that's what's gonna take. But I, I will say that if, if we're not gonna get the support from, from the council, from the city, I myself will resign, because I, I, I'm not going to put any more effort than, than what you guys are willing to put into it. And from, from the attendance, uh, that we've had, uh, for our complex committee to, to try and get this going from the city, I mean, the involvement from the city is absolutely not there, right? Um, I was very disappointed, and I know you guys had a special thing come up on, on last Sunday, but we had brought in a special guest, we did have the, uh, complex committee and the softball, uh, committee all there, all ready to go, so that all these questions could have been asked then, so that we could have brought them to this meeting here, had them all ready for you, and, and to be able to move forward. But that didn't happen, and now this is going to push out another fifteen, thirty days, whatever. This is the type of dragging feet bureaucracy that has caused this piece of land not to be used for the last ten years for its intended purpose. So, uh, I, I get exactly where you're coming, and if you can't approve it, you can't approve it. But, uh, this is, this is where I'm coming from, and at the next complex committee, I would one hundred percent, uh, appreciate somebody from the city being here.
Totally understand. BJ, I do wanna say, you had the meeting set up, you had a plan, Ryan was already gonna be there. It wasn't until the last council meeting that we said, hey, we should try to get some people there. You had a plan without us, and, and we were gonna try to be there. It, it is not in bad will that nobody could be there.
I see, I, I get, things, things come up, I just got.
I will piggyback on that and say, I think the initial meeting, there was some promises made and some people were lied to about who, who had been communicated with and who was gonna be in attendance. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, I'm not, I don't put Jesse on the spot here, but he and I were having some conversations about a conversation he was having with Ryan that never happened between Ryan and I, and I frankly, don't trust the guy. This conversation's never happened, I never spoke to that guy directly. So, if that's ever been alluded to, or flat-out said, that's a lie.
True.
And I had no idea if he's talked to, come out.
So.
I think we'll, maybe we have other comments, other discussion?
Well, I understand where BJ's coming from, and I'm, I, I hear him, hearing what he says, that you don't wanna see us drag our feet, I get that. But ultimately, we gotta answer to people, we're, you know, we spit, we throw forty thousand out there and it blows up, we're gonna have people ask us what the heck we were doing.
But there's two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars available for us to figure out how to get that place completed, correct? I mean, the, the ultimate goal is that we're, we're allocating money to get this place finished out here. Now, we've been asked to come to the city dozens of times with a plan, and now we've done that, and it's, you know, we're still going in circles.
I get it, and it's, and it doubles in details, like it's, and that doesn't mean this is a, this is a forever no, that's for sure, not the case, because I think that the feeling of most of the council is, yep, we need to do something on this order. I think they wanna see contracts, I think they wanna see what competing vendors they can get, and I think they wanna see, hey, wait a minute, what is the right timing to kick this off? Because the best spent forty thousand dollars is when it's timed right, with the right person and the right, and the right company. And I think the fear you're getting from this side of the table is, is that, we can go ahead and do it, but is, is, did we cross all our eyes and dot all?
Is it?
Did we dot all our eyes and cross all our t's?
Is it too big of an ask to say we could see a compet, uh, a competing vendor and a contract? By the next meeting, we'd make a decision and go yea or nay, two weeks' wait?
I think that's the least we could do for folks, I mean, uh.
I mean, let, let's see a proposal from a competing vendor, let's see a contract from this guy, let's make a decision, let's just say we're gonna make a decision, yea or nay, next meeting, first, second of March, or whatever day that is. Am I right on my beat?
I think it's a third.
Third, okay.
These two are big number out there, BJ, so five hundred people. The most people I've ever seen down here is a little over three hundred. Here, okay. And so, that, that had a lot of public support. And so, what's lacking here, in my opinion, has been, is, that frustrates you as much as anything is, why is the council dragging their feet? What's the council respond to, public support?
Is that a fair statement?
I think that's an absolute fair statement. Is the soccer people getting dragged along with this, how are they feeling?
Yeah, soccer's been, uh, very much, uh, involved through this whole process, and actually, I can feel bad for the soccer guys, cause all they need is just grass. We're the guys that are asking for all the money, we need, we need fence, and we need dirt, and, you know, but.
They don't need restrooms, cause they just.
Well, just finding shade, but, uh, no, the soccer guys.
They're pretty tough.
Yeah, soccer's been, was a nominal, you know, it, it, I would be in full support of any request that, that the soccer guys would need, I think that everybody just realizes that this is the elephant in the room, and this is the, the big thing that is going to make or break, you know, the existence of the complex out there.
So, BJ, what I say, is that a fair ask?
I would agree.
Is that a fair ask?
I, I would, I, I would be happy with that.
If you can provide, uh, look at this guy's contract and give us a, a proposal for a competing vendor, we'll put her on the agenda, we'll make a yea or nay decision at the next meeting.
I like that.
Is that a fair?
Yep, I'd be happy with that.
Do we need a motion to that case, or are you gonna trust us?
I'll trust you.
That's a big word, words mean things.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Okay, perfect, I'll look that.
Is that alright?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
BJ, make as many phone calls as you can for that public support.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, next item up, we've got surplus list.
So, just a couple items on the list to surplus, um, we budgeted and got new staff chairs, here are two new chairs for our staff table, we'd like to surplus the old ones, and we're actually utilizing the old ones down at the city shop, cause they have a hodgepodge of this broken ones down.
I heard somebody broke one.
Oh my god, they're ugly.
They're just, they're all broken and got issues, so we're gonna reuse them at the shop. And then the other item on there is that, um, we did purchase a new mosquito fogger, and so we wanna surplus our old one. You know, we got a new one, cause the old one is having issues, so we really don't want to resell it, cause we don't wanna calibrate wrong and any issues happen with it, you know, if another city gets it here. We don't want any liability coming back on us, so, I mean, we could donate it to another community, that why we wanna use it for parts, I mean, it's, it's nothing that a homeowner's gonna buy, you know, it's commercial. I mean, it's gonna be somebody who has a big unit, like another city or municipality that has it, so. We could throw an email and see if anybody wants.
We do have a neighboring, neighboring town, Humboldt, actually has the same part that we've got.
So, they might.
So, they might be using the parts themselves or something.
I'd approve the surplus list as, uh, as noted.
Second. And second. Discussion. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, do we have anything for correspondence? If not, I'll make a motion for executive session for legal and personnel.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session for legal and personnel.
Okay.
Aye then. First retired executive session, Jesse Alonzo Stitt. Alright, we're gonna get regular session.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept the resignation of Jesse Funkert as Chamber and Economic Development Director, regrettably, and wishing the best of luck.
So, I know.
Give me a tear.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that the right way to say it?
What, what do we wanna spend?
A motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we.
Yeah.
Two separate, that was.
Advertise for the Chamber Economic Development Director position.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You want me to add effective win immediately?
Immediately? All of that, you get it.
Do we have motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?